7:00 PM, I'd like to call the study session of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, May 11th to order. Our first item for discussion is a Lakewood Landing update with Ms. Newton and Mr. Stowe.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. Shall I begin? Thank you. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'm happy to present along with Mr. Stowe on the update for Lakewood Landing this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our team members that have been working with us for quite some time now on the project. We'll go through that. We'll also provide a little bit of background on the project, as well as go through the slide on the concept. And Bob will talk a little bit about the Wash Dot facility, as well as funding strategies. And we'll go ahead and go to Q and A. We've also provided a brochure that has been produced by our broker team as well. So let's go ahead and get into the presentation. Can you all see the slides?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
No.
Again. Okay, there we go. So our team members for the Lakewood Landing project include Mr. Bob Stowe, who is our consultant on the project. We also have our Lee and Associates team. Not sure if any of the members are present tonight, but they include Tom Brown, Vanessa Herzog, Christian Madsen, Kyle Prosser, Zane Shiraz. And I also wanted to acknowledge Stacy Chapman, who produced the brochure for us. Our design team, the Tacoma Design Collaborative, is led by Amy D. Dominicus, design architect. Her team includes Ben Ferguson, Ferguson Architecture, for the design and development pro forma. They were all very proactive and helpful in this project. Also, part of our team are Brad and Kim Nakamura, real estate developers. And construction numbers were provided by AppSure Construction. Sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so before we get into the concept, I wanted to give you just a little bit of an update on the program and kind of the early days and where we started. This project is located on Pacific Highway between Waterway and the BNSF Railroad Crossing, just north of the new WoodSpring Suites. In the mid-2000s, a real estate developer, regionally here in the area, looked at the property and engaged all of the property owners from the railroad railway crossing to the 512 interchange. All of the property owners at that time were interested in the project. The sticking point at that juncture was the Wash Dot property. They own about seven and a half acres, and it's a public works facility. And at that time, they couldn't figure out how to market and secure the property. That, in addition to the 2008 recession, essentially stopped the project. Then in 2013, after 2013, when Mr. Caulfield arrived to the city, we looked at various projects that were potential for redevelopment. But this one rose high on our priority lists due to the prime location and also the number of underutilized properties in the area. In 2014, we commissioned a fiscal benefits analysis to see if it would really be a benefit to the city of Lakewood and our community. And we found that not only that it would be beneficial to our community, but also provide additional revenue streams for the state of Washington and other agencies. In 2015, we conducted a market analysis and retail leakage study. And that looked at not only Lakewood peers, but regional cities and retail infrastructure throughout the region. In 2016, we started working with Mr. Stowe. And since then, Mr. Stowe and I have reached out to all of the property owners in the area to determine their level of interest. And all were either interested in selling their property or in a joint venture for a new project on that property. In 2016, we engaged Tacoma Design Collaborative, led by Amy D. Dominicus, to do an initial concept based on retail-themed project with experiences, restaurants, and so forth. And then in 2017, we engaged our lobbyists to explore funding strategies, engaging Wash Dot and also working with Mr. Stowe, the city manager, city attorney, and others for funding options, all instrumental in working with Wash Dot. 2017, we secured an MOU with the Washington State Department of Transportation. And that agreement included a planning-level estimate, concept for a new Wash Dot facility in another location within Lakewood. And then we also looked at site selection for that project. And all of the items within the MOU have essentially been completed, at least most of it has been completed. And then we moved into an RFP for broker services. And that's where we selected Lee and Associates, due to their expertise, expertise, enthusiasm, and deep knowledge of Lakewood area and the region. So we wanted to look at what's possible. So let's get into the concept. Okay, so as I mentioned, Amy and her team helped us to get an initial concept for the PAC Highway project. This particular project, as it's shown here, is a bird's eye view, looking to the south. It's approximately 30 acres, as I mentioned. The concept included two stories with mixed use, including-
Becky, the slide didn't change.
So you're not getting the slide change?
No, just have the cover slide, Lakewood Landing, May 11th, 2020. I think you're looking at page six of our package, but it's not showing up on this one.
There's some reason it wasn't sharing. Just let me go back to that. Are you seeing that again now?
No.
No?
Becky, this is John.
Yeah.
Rather than pulling the slides up, why don't you just, because they have the slides.
Okay, sure.
All up the slide, page number.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, I think you're referring to six, or- Page six in our package.
It's-
Kind of an aerial concept view of buildings?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Yes, that's correct. And so that's an aerial view of the concept. And then we'll go to the next slide, which shows a component of the project, an entertainment complex. This is something that could be done in that area, could potentially be bowling, nightclub, area theater complex, and so forth. And then the next slide. We also thought that it would be fun to have, because we're overlooking potentially the McCord runway, on the second floor of the project, could potentially include a themed restaurant, aviation-themed. And then the next slide. There is, within the project, a storm retention area. And so we thought it would be nice to potentially have a park in that area that included an interpretive education path with dual purpose on that site. And then the next slide. Because of the location of the project and the noise from I-5, of course, the building placement on the site is key to mitigating sound. But also, we thought that an eight-foot gabion wall would help in also mitigating some of the sound coming from I-5. And then the next slide. We are very interested in low-impact development and sustainability. And so with this, this project, we're looking at solar, potentially solar rooftop collectors. Other things that we could do include adding native species and water-wise plants and so forth. Okay, so next slide. Another idea to incorporate into the project, and maybe not a bad idea, in the health crisis of the age of COVID, thinking about where we're going with retail and the need for security and packages. And so an Amazon lock-per-box area for package pickup could be a potential addition to the project. And then the next slide. Added noise reduction and beautification for the project, potentially a water feature. And then next slide. One of my favorites is the courtyard interior of the project creates place-making for the area, a sense of community gathering places for folks to come and mingle. And then the next slide. These are just different photos of the possibilities, what it could look like, the different components, of course, retail, vibrancy, entertainment, gathering, just some ideas of what it could look like. And then the next slide. Getting into what the conceptual plan looks like from overhead. This is depicting the entire project of 30 acres, from the retention pond up to, actually up to 512, the 30 acres ends at 108. And with the core seed concept, essentially about in the middle of that project. The next slide shows a full site build-out with the Central Park area, showing six buildings. It includes a parking garage and entertainment complex and gentle density going down at the end of each end of the project. And kind of a general layout of what it could look like. And then a parking garage with wraparound area for driving. Next slide. Okay, so when we looked at the numbers for the project that I just showed you in the slide before, it appeared to be a little bit more than we could probably bite off in one project. So we reduced it to a phase, or Phase 1. The first idea was to have the buildings you see here still, the parking garage and entertainment complex, and the retail on one floor with five levels of residential above, and still looking at potentially an underground parking. Looking at the numbers, we determined that still probably a little bit more than we want to bite off. So the final concept that we're at right now looks a little bit like this and includes five buildings, still the five-over-two construction, with one level of parking underneath, which would be just for residents, and then a parking field. The interior, there would be a restaurant, potentially, where the courtyard is. And retail would face the interior of the block. Okay, the next slide is an overview, looking down on the project, zoomed out just a bit, and just showing what the layout would look like above. And you can see Lakewood Ford to your left, and then far right would be the 512 interchange. And then the next slide is just a closer view of that layout. And the next slide is another rendering that was developed by the collaborative, showing the buildings, the parking field, and then often the distance, not right near. You can also see where the look-forward field is. Next slide is just a closer view of the rent, another rendering, showing the the central courtyard, and then the far end, the parking field. And then finally, next slide, showing a rendering of the interior courtyard from the restaurant and the interior seating. And this kind of an idea of what it could look like with the retail on the first floor and apartments above. And then with that, we're going to move in to talk a little bit about the Wash Dot facility and also funding strategies. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Stowe.
Thank you, Becky, and good evening, council. It's nice to be with you tonight at your meeting, at least virtually. What I want to talk about is my first slide. I don't have, I have your packet up. I don't have your number, but it's a slide labeled Wash Dot Facility Concept Planning Level Estimate. And this is a site that's south of the central core that Becky has described. And it's owned by Washington State Department of Transportation. The execution of the MOU that Becky had mentioned, between the city and Wash Dot, created a path for Wash Dot to be relocated and a future development to occur on the site, provided that new funding is generated, that doesn't detract from Wash Dot's current expenses, our priorities, and that it's provided to the project. We developed a planning-level estimate of a cost for a new facility based on Wash Dot's current facility, as well as their desires for a new facility. And that created a cost between $27 to $31 million, which would build a facility that is about 51,000 square feet, compared to their existing facility, which is 35,000 square feet. So it's 48% larger. And we may be able to reduce the size of that facility, along with the cost. But for now, our planning-level estimate stands around the $30 million mark for relocating Wash Dot off the side onto another property. Becky, if you could advance the next slide, I guess you don't have a next slide to advance, but my next slide in your packet is labeled "One Option." And this is just simply illustrating one way in which a $30 million facility could be paid for, that we have presented to Wash Dot. This option relies on an award from the state, from either LIFT funding, which is local revitalization financing program. This requires authorization from the state legislature to reopen that program, or LRF funding, which is local revitalization financing program. Both of these would have to generate about $14 million or $1 million a year to pay for the debt service associated with the project. It includes a land contribution by Wash Dot, which their current land is valued at about $7.5 million. Also, a cash contribution from Wash Dot of $2.6 million, and a direct legislative contribution of almost $6 million. And so if you received a larger LIFT or LRF award, that, of course, would reduce the other funding components. For example, if you were awarded $2 million per year, that would nearly pay for the full cost associated with Wash Dot's facility based on the debt service at an interest rate of 2.75% per year. If you can advance the next slide for me, or the next slide that we have illustrates all the funding options that we have evaluated. We studied how the city might be able to assist in the creation of a viable mixed-use development that was described by Becky. Real estate developers have a multitude of viable development options in our region and asking the development community, at least from my point of view, to build something organically, is not supported by the market currently, requires some additional vision, requires planning, labor tools, and incentives by the entity, really, that's seeking something different and desirable. So at the direction of the, by the city manager, we studied the most likely funding options that might be available for a developer of a project, such as the multifamily tax exemption that you currently offer developers, as well as a number of other affordable housing tax credits, based on the affordable units, as well as other sources that the developer might have access to. We also evaluated and identified some city incentives that could be offered as a means to support the likely gap of what the market will support and the desired development. There is a gap there. These are incentives that are included also in the development brochure that's later on in your packet. These incentives include $5 million grant or $5 million contribution from the city in order to pay for the infrastructure costs associated with the development, the multifamily tax exemption that I mentioned, a priority permit system, really fast-tracking the permit, expediting the permit for anyone who chooses to invest, no impact fees, no local BNO tax, which you currently offer, and also 50% discount of the building permit fees, which, based on the order of magnitude for the central core development, we believe to be about $1 million. The next slide in your packet includes some information, sort of a high-level summary of the reform analysis that we conducted. And this really is meant to really sort of highlight just the order of magnitude associated with just the central core. And that includes $260 million of development activity, residential units of over 700, retail units of 87,000 square feet, and then total parking spaces of over 1,400 on the site itself. The next slide is an illustration of the Lakewood community's return on its investment. This development is not only a placemaking project for the city, but it's one that's going to provide some significant ROI against the city's pledge for incentives and leadership of the project. These are the figures from the 2015 study that Becky had mentioned earlier that highlights the significant sales tax, both ongoing as well as one-time property tax and BNO tax that would be received from the development. The next slide is a schedule. It's really a draft schedule for the Lakewood Landing project and is reflective of a possible timeline, subject to property owner support, subject to legislative funding, and then subject to a positive economic environment and marketplace. Additionally, the timeline proposes a two-step process involving both an RFQ and an RFP, but we could later decide to do a hybrid of both and call it a development offering, or simply an RFP. The advantage of an RFQ, RFP, or specific development offering is that it also considers the qualifications of a development team and the development proposal, in addition to what someone is willing to pay a collection of property owners for the site. This is a schedule that reflects a period over six years. If we're able to issue an RFQ in the third quarter of this year, we could, at that point, select a development team, potentially in early 2021, finish negotiations with that development team, six or nine months is usually sort of the standard for developing those MOUs, PSAs, and development agreements. And then in the city grants, if those were received and incentives were awarded that same year, potentially be under construction in the central core in late 2022. The Wash Dot facility could be under construction if we were to receive legislative funding and had acquired a site for them, or identified a site for them in 2020, 2023. And the remaining development that would be north and south of the central core could occur in 2024. Now, all of that is a very aggressive schedule and dependent, again, upon property owner support, legislative funding, and positive market conditions, especially in light of the health crisis that we're experiencing. So you can tell from the schedule, and these are very high-level milestones and activities that would need to occur, that there are a lot of moving parts in the Lakewood Landing project, even without the current economic situation caused by the health crisis. But even with those challenges of funding in the current economy, we have, I think, a lot to be, or Lakewood has a lot to be optimistic about as we have moved this project forward in a short period of time. So I'm going to hand the presentation back to Becky, who will be providing some very high-level next steps. And of course, I'm available for questions that the council might have now or at the end of the presentation.
Great, thank you, Bob. Yep, so the next slide just shows, like as Bob mentioned, some very high-level next steps. Now, we're continuing to work with the property owners. We have an agreement in place, ready to be signed by one of the majority property owners in the area. We will next go to obtain feedback from the identified developers that would be most likely to want to try to take on a project of this scope. And then we'll revise the offering based on that feedback from the developers. And then upon property support, we will go and move forward to get a solicitation or develop proposals through competitive offerings for the project. We will also, at the same time, continue to advance the Wash Dot Facility relocation future development for that opportunity. And then also, in addition, we will evaluate. The next step would be to evaluate and work with developers and select a developer or developers for the project. And so with that, we have a couple, or another slide there. But I think we are, I think that is basically what we have to present this evening. If you have any questions, of course, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Through council. Mr. Wayland.
Thank you. I am very excited about the proposal. We have talked a little bit about this at a high level for the last year or so. I think it's fantastic. It's a big lift, of course. With COVID in place and the likely impact of the state budget, I think the state Wash Dot phase is something that probably will be on a back burner for a little bit of time. But I am pleased that we can phase this and move forward with the private component of the project. So my question, Becky, and perhaps to Bob, is describe to me the process by which we actually evaluate proposals and select developers when we potentially don't have all the private players on the same page yet, or maybe we do. I'm just not quite sure where we are with the private ownership at this stage.
Sure. So I'll make a few comments, and then, Bob, you can chime in as well. So a couple of things on that. The evaluation of the proposals for the developer has not been developed yet. However, there are some templates that we'll use. We want to ensure that whatever- We want to ensure that whatever developer or developers that we choose are kind of on the same wavelength of the city of what we're looking to develop and what we really expect for that area, and also in line with the subarea planning that we're going, that we are doing right now with the Lakewood Station District. And also in terms of the property owners, there are a couple of property owners within the central core for the first phase of the project. As I mentioned, the the majority property owner has a, an agreement in in front of them right now. It may have already been signed. If not, it will be within the next week or so. And so we feel like we do have the support of of that particular property owner, and then the other property owner also will follow. So we'll get those agreements in place, and then we'll get the developer offering and criteria in place as well, based on experience from the the development team and the broker team, just so everybody is on the same page and in agreement with with how we're moving forward.
Becky, what are the high-level components of the agreements that are on the desk of these various property owners? What are we asking them to commit to?
So the the property owner that we're working with right now, the majority property owner is wanting to have be a part of the project, so as a joint venture. So they're committing to, for us to market the property and also to cooperate with with us on the the redevelopment and and also when we decide, you know, what would the the development's going to look like, and that their contribution is part of the project, the land contribution.
Right, but but they're not committing to, hey, if you can bring me a buyer at X dollars per foot, I'm all in, that kind of a thing? That's not quite where we are yet, right?
Not at this point, no, no. That's correct.
Very good.
Mr. Mr. Bransdiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Becky, Mr. Stowe, I am a, kind of want to get some some clarity about where does the concurrent work on the subarea plan fit in to this and what we are telling people the plan not being approved with is what is what we are telling people sort of making a commitment to some of the structural things in that will be in the subarea plan, even though this is only a, an area within the plan. But it seems that, you know, there are some things in the downtown that we worked a long time and was closer to the end of the plan that we decided on that seem to be in the proposal we're putting out to developers already.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bransdiner. Yes, so what we're doing from the get-go is because we have the project, Lakewood Landing Project, it's being put forward through all the communications and as we do the outreach for the subarea plan, so that we know this is a project that we feel is viable for the future of Lakewood and that we want to ensure that when we move forward with the subarea plan, that the components of the Lakewood Landing Project are taken into consideration. Does that make sense?
Yes, Mrs. Stowe, on your chart with the timeline, you know, the approval of a subarea plan and a planned action ordinance and a CIPA weren't weren't in that list of things that would go on is where in that does that need to get finalized to keep the rest of your timeline on track?
You could cert, I'd first say that it, to the extent that you could provide certainty for the development community, that's the best case scenario, certainly in terms of both property owner support that you have in the central core, and certainly in regards to development regulations that will occur in the central core. Your plan action ordinance is only can provide another incentive for the development community in that you're already taking a look at your mitigation requirements, and so the developer will know upfront that along this, so long as he develops in accordance with the plan, he'll be able to move into entitlement position in a much more expedient manner. So it's a long way of saying that to the extent that you can have all of that wrapped up before you solicit development would be the best, but you could also during during the time that you're evaluating developers, but you I think you'd want to have it wrapped up so that you can provide as much certainty as you can before you select a final development team and before you start negotiations with that developer in terms of what he's going to be building on the site. But you're right, council member, I didn't include the plan action ordinance or the subarea planning process that you're going through there now, but was anticipating that we'd want to overlap the two processes to make sure that we again provide as much certainty as we can for the development community who's going to be investing in this project.
On the listing of city incentives on your charge with funding options and and do that, and I always get into the rhetorical claim of no impact fees. When we were saying that about the downtown plan too, but we built in transportation and park mitigation fees into it with the telling ourselves what those aren't really impact fees, they're called something else, even though they look like impact fees. You know, how important is it that we maintain credibility by saying these incentives are in place and not baiting, switching them with something else?
Well, to the extent that the city can offer incentives, regardless of what they are, will make an impact to the development community, especially when you're asking the developers to build something that is not being built today in Lakewood. Your rents aren't sufficient enough to support the type of development that we're requesting on Lakewood Landing. And so there's a reason why we're we've we've shown a number of different incentives. I wouldn't want to have you go out and promise something that you're not able to deliver upon. So I think it is important that you're able to, you know, stand by those those pledges, whether it's no impact fees or incentives that you're offering, whatever we put in the RFP or the RFQ, that you're able to fulfill those those pledges when it comes to negotiating the agreements.
Okay, I I guess that I I do think the, it's certainly been being worked and is is well thought through. I agree that your timeline would be wonderful, but is probably aggressive to be able to go and do that.
Yes.
That the brochure that was put together by the the associates folks, you know, goes back a week to our discussion about the value of something durable in print that can be looked at and then looked at again and and relooked at. It seemed to be well done. I'm not a developer, so I don't know whether to be impressed by it or not, but it but it did impress me to be able to go through and do that. Okay, and, you know, thank you for all your work up to this point, and we anticipate good work going forward.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just just a few questions. Page, on page 25, it says projected land cost $4,410,000. And then a page later, it says Wash Dot contribution at $7,530,000 land. Explain, is one the cost of the estimated cost of the property in Lakewood, and the others, what they would have to buy somewhere else? Is that what I'm looking at?
I don't have that that page in the packet, but you're right, that one is the projection of what the current value of where they reside today, and that's close to seven and a half million. The four and a half to $5 million figure should be a projection of buying land at approximate square foot cost in in Lakewood somewhere else as as an average cost that they'd also have to add to the $30 million cost for relocation. That that I'll tell you, we also have been looking at sites that Wash Dot currently owns in the city of Lakewood that could be utilized as a potential site, and of course, doing so would cost any additional amount beyond the construction costs associated with the facility.
Now, when you're saying 51,500 square feet in the new facility, that's actually the building. That's actually like office building, garages, those kind of things, sheds?
That's correct, and that was based on, at least at the time that we had performed that analysis of about six and a half acre site. Through discussions with Wash Dot, we believe we can reduce that size of the of the site itself to probably something closer to five acres, and we certainly believe that we could probably reduce the square footages associated with the building too.
Is there a concern that the current site might have hazardous waste issues?
You know, phase one and phase two would would be necessary. Certainly a phase one to at least determine, are there any environmental hazardous situations that that we need to take care of, oil, gasoline, solvents, or soil remediation? DOT has agreed before that they would sell any of the land, that they would be responsible for that cleanup, and they see that as their their responsibility as a steward of land, as a representative of the of the state of Washington as well. But that is something we'd have to factor into any redevelopment, that just whatever timelines associated with that remediation of that soil, if if necessary.
But they've agreed to do it?
Yes.
May slow it down, okay.
They slow it down. It could occur, they've agreed to do it in front of any development. That would, of course, require them to move off-site. It may be more cost-effective to have it done during when development is actually occurring on the site, because they're already removing soil anyway, and so it's just a matter of calculating what the dirty soil is so that they can send it to the right location at a higher cost, and they would have, you know, just sent the clean soil somewhere else.
So and and most of that would occur in the area that's destined to be the infiltration area?
Potentially. I mean, there is an infiltration pond there today, to the extent that we can, if it has more capacity, we could continue using that. So any place where they've had storage tanks, any place where they have worked on vehicles are potential sites for a little bit of cleanup. But it's not something that, at least that that anyone's identified to date, that it's going to be a significant cleanup project and preventing the redevelopment of the site.
Okay, so when you say rents are not sufficient, you I I'm assuming you mean both residential and commercial, but tell me if I'm wrong, let let I'll assume it's both residential and commercial. Can you tell me what the gaps are between what's going on in our market and what you would you would need from a market standpoint?
Sure, so I'd have to look back through my notes to determine what the rents are you're currently collecting, but there is a gap for what you're currently receiving developers, private multifamily development is receiving for rents in Lakewood. They would more than likely need to approach the levels that you're seeing in Tacoma or anywhere else in the Puget Sound where you see five over one, five over two, five over three type construction, because you're getting into a more costly construction method because you're building now a podium of concrete of one, two, or three stories on top of that wood frame. And so doing so increases the cost, and there's just not enough rent that's being produced in the Lakewood market today that would currently support that construction type, that five over one, five over two, five over three construction. That's what we're showing on our development brochures. You could probably make a go of it by just doing sort of the the garden-style, sort of the woody walk-ups, as they're called, three-story development, less expensive construction technique and and have rents to support that, but that's not sort of the ultimate vision. And so similarly, retail is a very difficult prospect to provide in any community, even when you have good rents, just because of the retail environment. And so we're utilizing the the housing as an incentive to also bring along those retail tenants below them in a five over one or five over two type scenario. So there's a gap there, and we think by when you when you add up all the different incentives that we we placed in the development brochure have identified, that comes very close, plus assuming that another year, two or three years down the road, your rents will also start to increase. So it's the combination of both those things that we believe makes it in the realm of possibility that you'll be able to attract a developer, and this will be a viable development if you're able to fill that gap with incentives and also fill the gap with some additional activity in the rental market two or three years out.
What do you see? I mean, if if someone was asking me about this, they watched the presentation tonight or they saw it, and I I have an idea of the general concept, and I and I'm I'm really am pleased at how far this thing has moved along. But to the average citizen out there, they're going to be, especially right now, very cynical and say, okay, so what's the niche? What, you know, what what exactly? I I get, okay, apartments over commercial. What commercial? What's the niche? I mean, when I see a lot of the development law in Tacoma, it's right on the water, right? There's a, it's right there. There's amenities around it. What what kind of developer is going to be interested in a property like this? What's the niche?
I think for for Lakewood, you have access to transit facilities just right across the street. You have highway access, you have great visibility. Whether it includes residential is is something yet to be seen. That's just one of the concepts that we presented. We started this process with a full retail-type development with no residential, and so that still could come to fruition if the market would support that. But I think the niche for development is going to be your access to transit facilities, your location along I-5, your visibility, and then it's about creating a project that is memorable and provides an experience as to why people want to go there, especially if you have shopping involved, retail. There's got to be a reason for why people want to go there. And I think if you can do those things, create, make it memorable, make it somewhat experiential, and then have access to trans facilities and 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 good access to the highway, those are all things in your favor as to why development and why this site, I think, is is, you know, gives me optimism.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Farmer.
Hello. This is a great presentation. I'm really excited about the project. Ms. Newton or Mr. Stowe, from the central core, about how far of a walk is it to the to the Lakewood Transit Center? I'm having a hard time picturing from the core. Roughly.
Ms. Farmer, it's probably, I would say, to Lakewood Station, maybe less than half a mile, guessing, but probably less than 10 minutes.
Okay. Just trying to tell from the map. Also, this project reminds me, in its conceptual stage and the brochures and and in its imagining, it reminds me a little bit of Kent Station, and I'm curious if the talk of a concert venue ever came up. I know it's just completely strange to think about in these times that ever we'd ever I know it's just completely strange to think about in these times that ever, we'd ever go to a concert again, but, but I'm curious.
I think, um, at one time we had talked about it because obviously there, there are lots of possibilities for this site. This is just one. Um, but there has been some talk about, you know, an entertainment, entertainment venue. It could potentially be a concert. Um, we haven't discussed it in detail though.
Thank you.
So, uh, a couple of questions. Uh, how do you arrive at? Because it's a very important part of, uh, this penciling is, uh, how'd you arrive at the size of apartments? It seems like a pretty small mix, probably half and half ones and twos and not particularly big.
Uh, simply a, a look at what the region was, was building and what the demand seems to be. Um, in, in the Puget Sound and more particularly the, um, Tacoma area in terms of the mix of one, two and three bedroom apartments and then the size of those, of those units. Um, apartments could be anywhere from, I mean, the very, very small end of almost four hundred square feet to something larger than fifteen hundred square feet. And so our performer, at least the analysis that we had conducted was simply based on sort of regional demand and what we see being requested and built in, in the marketplace today. Um, but that doesn't mean that a developer has, you know, another notion or another, um, uh, belief that he might make successful. So you, you could have a, a different mix of one and two and three bedrooms, um, and, as a multi-family project.
So when you say there's, there's a, it, it does a pencil, it's going to just have to get imposed and time has to pass. What is the, uh, either the delta in annual cash flow shortfall or percentage of income? What's the shortfall?
Uh, for a developer, it's going to be just simply, um, on a construction cost. I mean, construction costs are pretty much the same anywhere in the Puget Sound. They're, they're not much different than, than Lakewood and they would be in Seattle or, or Mill Creek or anywhere in the state. And so I'm, am I, am I on mute? No.
Yes, you're on, you're on mute. Bob, you're on mute.
Sorry, testing your lip reading skills. But the, the, the cost of construction is the same anywhere in the state, um, or at least on the, at least the west side. And so, um, when you're looking at a five over one project or a five over two project, that's going to require a certain, uh, uh, rent that, um, in order to pay for those construction costs, those annual, annual revenues year over year for the next, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, and if they're not sufficient, then there's a gap. And that's what we've identified, at least the analysis that we've done, is that there is a gap currently. And or that what residents are paying today in Lakewood, uh, if you were to build, um, this development today, there will likely be a gap that you're, that someone's going to have to fill.
The question is, what is that gap? Either, either in the annual cash flow shortfall or percentage of income?
Um, it's annual cash flow shortfall.
Uh, what is it? How big a number?
Oh, well, it's, I don't have the exact, it's
Throw money at this and there's a shortfall.
Yes.
It's obviously not going to work. So somebody's going to have to make that up. How, how big's the delta?
Uh, it's, if you give me a couple of minutes, I'll, I'll find it, but I'm going to say it's probably closer to probably fifteen million dollars.
A year?
Um, no, that's, let, let me, let me look further. The notes are real quick and I'll be able to find that for you.
I, I think that's a real important number.
Yeah.
Because that's, it's a great concept. The other question I had, the cool water category is, what's, what's the advantage here over redeveloping a failed shopping center? It's, uh, similarly situated at, you know, high traffic area because, uh, brick and mortar shopping centers are imploding. Uh, personally think that that trend is going to continue, uh, even here in Lakewood where we had one at one time. At our town center, it flipped. Some buildings came down. It's outward facing. It's been the entertainment restaurants. And, uh, we'll probably see more of the brick and mortar retailers in that space go away. So, uh, why? Why is this unproven site going to be able to compete with, say, an Auburn Supermall or Tacoma Mall site? Uh, that, uh, established retail traffic in the past, but it's going to likely be turned into something else.
Well, I don't know. It's not going to be a project that is going to be built to compete with some of those larger retail developments. Um, eighty seven thousand square feet is still eighty seven thousand square feet. It's not insignificant. But it's not something that you should expect to compete with those larger retail outlets or those larger retail malls. Um, it's going to have to be, I suspect retail that's, um, going to be supported by the local area, supported by the residents, supported by sort of, and it's complementary to transit use. Um, restaurants, um, sort of experiential type retail. You're right though, retail is, is, is going to be a, a difficult, um, prospect to bring onto the site, any site. But it's also a necessary component, uh, for placemaking as well. Um, and, and, you know, we're encouraged by the opportunity to be given, given the visibility, given the location to I five and and given the transit access. And maybe there's some connection also with JBLM. Um, that could further provide that, that niche for both residential or for shopping experience on that site. But I wouldn't expect it to compete with some of those larger, um, retail facilities, nor, nor do you have the property um, um, to, to offer to compete for that, with that type of, those type of developments.
So kind of, and then on a more positive note, I've had, uh, young, you know, out of college family members live in similar locations in, uh, Minnesota, North Carolina and, uh, Denver, which worked well to varying degrees. Uh, and were attractive. They had a, some sort of synergy with the retail, uh, entertainment, restaurant, transit, residential mix. Uh, one of them had an office component to it. So, uh, was that explored at all? And I don't even know how the square footage rent compares.
Uh, we did. I mean, it would be great to be able to have an office component, a, a, a live, work and play component, if it will, on the site. Um, the, the challenge is, is just competing with the existing buildings, um, in Lakewood, in the surrounding area and what someone can rent space for, and then what you'd have to receive from rents um, to support new construction. So we certainly wouldn't turn down, um, any developer who wanted to put second story, um, office on that site or, or multi-story office building. It's just that, um, out of the gate, certainly for the central core, we didn't think it's some, it's probably going to be the, the most successful, um, um, opportunity for us. But if a developer was interested in putting office, uh, component on that site, um, I would, I would strongly encourage that, um, for the development.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wayland.
I just want to echo, um, a couple of thoughts as to why I think this could be pretty successful from a unique comparative advantage standpoint. I mean, you, unlike a lot of the other developments or concepts we see around the area, you know, like University Place has done a nice job, but it doesn't have the access to I five. It doesn't have the huge adjacent neighbor in JBLM. And it doesn't have the, the ground to create the amenities that this concept drawing certainly could. It would attract good, solid, uh, housing occupants there. So I'm encouraged by it. I think that the Kent Station, uh, analysis that you helped remember Farmer mentioned, I think probably is most applicable, uh, with transit options, but I think it's a winner because of the JBLM connection, the I five frontage and the immediate adjacent within a quarter mile transit we currently have. So I, I think we have a lot to be, uh, bullish about. It's just a matter of continuing to drive forward and putting the pieces together. And I guess the final ask to the city manager and Ms. Newton is, what more can we provide other than a continuing nod of, of affirmation that, hey, it looks good? Uh, what else can we provide by way of policy guidance that would be helpful to you?
Becky, do you want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Um, you know, I would, um, first off, I think, uh, you know, I, I would say that this project also is going to complement what's going on in the region. And, you know, a lot what's going on in Lakewood for, um, you know, we're not trying to compete with Lake, you know, with Tacoma or, um, you know, Lacey or Olympia or DuPont or anything like that. We're trying to find our own niche and, you know, what we can do to complement, um, you know, our economic basis as, as a region. And what was said here this evening, um, those are all viable possi- possibilities. Um, in terms of what the legislative body can do, um, I think a couple of things, um, you know, continuing to move forward on the planned action ordinance for the Transit Center, you're going to get an update on that next week. And, uh, right now our goal and objective is, um, hopefully to have that back in front of you in the early part of 2021. So then you can take action to actually put it in place, um, in about April or so, so less than a year from now. And again, as, uh, Mr. Stowe pointed out, that would be a tremendous, not just a tool, but provide some additional, additional, additional certainty. Um, the other is, um, you know, and I think Mr. Stowe is going to get at this. The mayor asked, you know, what's the delta? Um, and I think the delta, and, and Bob will probably prove me wrong here, but is about fifteen or seventeen million. The total construction cost is two hundred and sixty seven million. And I think the income over a period of time is two fifty. So I think that delta is about seventeen million or so. And so we need to help, um, you know, solve that. And, um, I think the options that have been presented are, at this point in time, are really good ones. So for the city to step up and help build, uh, some of the infrastructure, um, I think will go a long way. One of the things that we talked about that we don't want to do is we don't want to own it and we don't want to maintain it. Uh, because really this is going to be a private development and they're going to want to maintain it at a much higher standard than what we do as the city. Um, the other is, uh, you know, uh, continued incentives, for example, the multi-family, uh, ta- tax exemption. Um, and then as we look at our development services fees, again, what can we do to help, you know, move things along? And all of those things are going to take council action. Um, and certainly between now and then, um, you know, there could be some other things that, that, that will arise that we are going to need your, um, leadership and policy direction. Um, and then the, really the big one, as we look out, not just near term, but medium term, is continuing to work with our state delegation on the importance of tax increment financing. You know, and I know in the presentation this evening, the focus was on really a derivative of that, which is, you know, lift or lurf. Um, but really what would move this project to the next level is tax increment financing. And, uh, that's one area that you folks can take a strong leadership role with our state delegation, um, in the governor's office in the upcoming and future sessions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Yes, I was, that was the only thing I was going to add as well as the TIF. I would, I would echo that, that it would be very important. Um, for not only this project, for other projects for Lakewood going forward. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Well, thank you very much. It's a thorough presentation. I think it's, uh, done well. And he seems to have addressed, uh, a, a lot of the questions that we've asked along the way. It's, uh, we, we understand there is a risk involved in, uh, devoting resources to a project like this, but if we're going to go forward, sometimes you have to think outside the box. You just want to make sure that, you know, lose the box. So thanks again. I appreciate your work.
Welcome. Thank you, Marion. I just wanted to confirm that, um, the city manager was correct in terms of the delta. It is that seventeen million dollar mark. I'll get you the actual figure. Um, I'll send it to, to Becky and they, she can forward it off to you.
That'd be great.
The incentives that we are offering only covered about half of that. And so the other half was hope to come from just uh, time and, and allowing rents to creep up to the construction cost or to be able to support the construction cost.
I, I, I come from a lawyer for banks background and have dealt with credit committees and special assets way too much. So I look at it from, like I walks in the door and says, I have this great idea. I'm going to build this. Uh, hope isn't a plan.
Yeah, great question.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we'll, uh, now move to a review of small wireless facility franchise agreement with New Singular Wireless LLC, AT&amp;T. And for this, we have Ms. Kelly Fall.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you all hear me? Great. Then I'll get started. I'm here tonight to review a draft small wireless facility franchise agreement with New Singular Wireless LLC, which to be clear is AT&amp;T. You can find the materials for this presentation starting on page fifty five of your council packet. Wireless systems, like other utilities, are a critical component to Lakewood's viability as a place to live, work, play and conduct business. To provide sufficient levels of connectivity, small wireless facilities, which are a type of broadband infrastructure, are increasingly important components of wireless systems. The draft small wireless facility franchise agreement would allow AT&amp;T to deploy small wireless facilities in the city's rights of way, provided it follows the terms of the franchise agreement, which include obtaining all required city permits. So this would be land use permits, right-of-way permits and paying all necessary city fees. So to be clear, right-of-way refers to land reserved or dedicated for roads, sidewalks, utility lines, et cetera. This agreement does not allow for the use of city facilities such as city hall or city parks or city-owned infrastructure such as city-owned poles located in the right-of-way. Importantly pursuant to RCW thirty five twenty one eight sixty, the city is prohibited from imposing franchise fees upon a telephone business or service provider. That being said, the city can seek reimbursement for costs associated with the preparation process and approval of the franchise agreements. The city requires a five thousand dollar small wireless facility franchise application deposit for this purpose. As a reminder, on September twenty sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the FCC issued a declaratory ruling and third report and order, which greatly restricted local government's ability to regulate the build-out of small wireless facilities. This FCC order included the establishment of safe harbor fees, aesthetic and design standards, as well as significantly shorter shot clocks. In December two thousand and nineteen, the city adopted Lakewood Municipal Code Title eighteen A, Land Use and Development, which includes eighteen A ninety five Wireless Service Facilities, Article Four, Small Wireless Facilities. This section prescribes application requirements, review criteria, permit requirements, design zones and design requirements that meet the FCC ruling. The proposed draft franchise begins on page fifty nine of your packet. This agreement was modeled after several active franchise agreements in other cities in Washington State and was re- res- reviewed by WCIA. In brief, uh, the key elements of this franchise are the following. This franchise allows AT&amp;T to construct and operate small wireless facilities, not macro infrastructure. And so I want to be clear on that. On page fifty six, you'll find Exhibit A and Exhibit B, uh, which provide examples of small wireless facilities. And then there's also Exhibit C, which provides an example of a macro tower, again, which is not allowed per this franchise. Uh, this agreement is a non-exclusive license to allow the city, for the use of the city's rights of way, which means that other providers and other utilities can make similar agreements. In fact, the city has a number of utility franchises in place that use the city's right-of-way. And the city has also heard from other cellular providers also interested in small wireless facility franchise agreements. The term of the agreement is for five years with an automatic renewal of one additional five-year term. And importantly, either party has the ability to not renew the franchise with proper notification to the other party. As I previously mentioned, AT&amp;T must obtain all necessary permits associated with activities undertaken through this franchise. The city currently uses the safe harbor fees identified in the aforementioned FCC order. These fees are listed on page fifty seven of your packet. The city does not allow for the use of, um, excuse me. This agreement does not allow for the use of city poles, only city rights of way. The use of city poles in the rights of way would require another agreement, which is called a master license agreement. This agreement would be executed by the city's engineer. Um, this agreement could also include use of other city infrastructure, if so desired by the city. AT&amp;T, um, would have thirty days to establish any facilities um, that are found by the city that are unauthorized installations in the rights of way. And after thirty days, if these sites are not renewed, uh, AT&amp;T would be subject to a five hundred dollar a day penalty. And similar language exists for improperly installed facilities. So if AT&amp;T comes in, gets So if AT&amp;T comes in, gets an approval and it's installed incorrectly or impedes pedestrian traffic, it would fit this criteria. All facilities that are permitted must be put into use within one year of receiving approval or else they'll become unauthorized installations. Following the expiration or termination of the franchise, it is AT&amp;T's responsibility at their sole expense to remove their facilities from the city's rights of way. Pursuant to Section 9.1, removal of all facilities shall be completed within 90 days. And once again, if those facilities are not removed within that time period, they will be deemed an unauthorized installation. At this time, the city has not received any small wireless facility applications. It is likely that the first wave of applications that the city will receive will be for 4G infrastructure and then soon thereafter for 5G infrastructure. In very non-technical terms, 5G is meant to deliver faster and more reliable data than in previous generations. For next steps for this franchise, a public hearing is tentatively proposed for May 18th, which is the next regular city council meeting. And then following that, city council action on the proposed franchise agreement is tentatively scheduled for the June 1st regular city council meeting. At this time, the city council could approve or deny the franchise. This concludes my presentation. So are there any questions, comments or items in the franchise that the city council would like to discuss further at this time?
Questions for Ms. Kelly Fong, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I just had one clarifying question on page 57. There is a section there that talks about recurring fees. There's a right-of-way fee and a city infrastructure fee. And it says the right-of-way fee is annual and the infrastructure fee is something say. But my question was, are those, like, the right-of-way fee, is that per installation or is it one fee that covers the franchise?
So the, the annual right-of-way access fee would be one fee that would cover access to the right-of-way within the entirety of the year.
And the, the second fee in that group, is that one that's a one-time fee, but it's per installation?
Correct, so that would occur annually per an installation. So if a, if AT&amp;T, for example, had five small wireless facilities, they would be charged that rate five times per year.
All right, so it's also an annual fee?
Correct.
Okay, I, you know, I really appreciate the fact that we're crafting a detailed franchise and, and, and looking to establish it by ordinance and that it's with a major provider rather than a minor provider, so that it essentially becomes the template for all that follow. And so, so I'm hoping that this goes through to do that. You mentioned we hadn't received any applications yet. So is the timeline for any provider going to be get your franchise and then make application?
If they want to use-
Which AT&amp;T is doing?
Correct, if they want to use the city rights of way, that would be the correct timeline. If they were to use private property, they wouldn't need to get a city franchise agreement for the use of rights of way.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? I have a question. It's kind of where the private property and city rights of way intercept. And that's using the facilities owned by our other power company franchisees within the city right-of-ways, which is something that wasn't contemplated directly, at least by the existing franchise agreements with, for example, Puget Sound Energy. I would like to see us explore not charging the AT&amp;Ts of the world more outside the safe harbor, but addressing the issue with the people who own the poles inside the city right-of-ways. If they're going to use it for a different business purpose, basically renting space to other people, we should get a haircut off that. Anybody else have comment or question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, well done and it seems to be progressing nicely.
Thank you.
So now we move to review the six-year transportation improvement program. We have Mr. Busic and Mr. Ott waiting in the wings, I suspect.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the council. This evening, we're talking about the updates to the, the new tip, the 2021 through 2026 tip, and that's pages 87 through 92 in your packet. And I think what would be most direct is to take a look at page 92 in the map and size it according to your screen for ease of viewing. So this map is a reflection of the work council did September 28, 2019, when council looked at different funding options for future transportation projects as a follow-on to the general obligation bond work that had been done previously. And the tip projects for additions this year are shown in the magenta color and those reflect projects that were discussed for connectivity that weren't already in the six-year tip. The projects in an orange color, those reflect tip modifications. And the modifications are basically extents of the project or the type of improvement. And you can see, we have really started to branch out our improvements to the city beyond just our north-south and some of our east-west arterials. But we are now connecting parks and residential areas and other areas within the city to develop a connected community, not just for the driving public, but for other modes of transportation. So with that, I think I would ask if any of these proposed projects, if there's any further description that I can add to those projects or anything that we could talk about further on this map.
Questions from Mr. Ott regarding this map and Mr. Whalen?
Well, thank you. I see the future proposed sidewalks and I note what's marked as Project 155 appears to be something aligned with the hope that we have in our legacy plan to have a vastly improved Edgewater Park, so that we actually have some, some walkability to one of the lakes in Lakewood, which we really don't have right now in much of the lakes. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that would be Edgewater and then Waverly to make that loop connection from Silicon Boulevard to Mount Tacoma and ultimately back into town center.
So I see Mount Tacoma there in yellow. I would love to see some color that makes it look as if it might actually happen in our lifetime. To me, that is one of the most challenging strips of crappy road with no shoulders that we have in the city that's a minor corridor. It leads now to the other pink area, 153 or 162, you know, right down to our new great Colonial Plaza. But you look at all those little streets, all those little houses that lead to Mount Tacoma Drive, and I can tell you that that's the main access road and it's junk. So I would hope someday we can do a better job of giving people access, especially now we're going to improve Edgewater Park. And you're taking that loop on 155 there all the way to Silicon Boulevard, which, as we know, is going to have some nice sidewalks, so it gives even better walkability. To me, this would be a great loop to really think about completing sooner than later. That's my comment.
And I might add, Mount, Mount Tacoma is in the current six-year tip.
It's, it's in the tip and portions of it. And of course, we also have all the way down Interlock and to Short Street, which we know is a wonderful dream to have, a kind of a pipe dream. And I know we try to phase these as money's become available as best we can. But I just think I'm planting the seed that that little piece that's at least in yellow there, connecting the two pink, would be a nice way to phase that project. But I'm all for what you got, so that's great.
Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I have some concerns about that we're adding too many projects, while we still have quite a few projects already in the tip. Ms. Farmer wasn't with us, but the rest of you would go back, if we were to go back to eight years, you know, where we were trying to deal with the criteria that the decision-making process about what projects to do was what grants could we chase? And we're putting more projects on that can be chased for grants. And without, you know, eight years ago, we went through a real prioritization project that took a long term, but it's now gotten us to where we're looking to do veterans and we're looking to do Washington. And we did completing Lakewood Drive and Silicon Boulevard. And still from that first prioritization list, there was, there is completing Hipkins Road and doing the stretch of Mount Dehamma that the deputy mayor mentioned to be able to go and do that. And to some extent, some of those projects have gone away because we added newer items later on into the tip, chased a grant for them, didn't get to where they are. And, and some of those things that we went through a process of where we really engaged with the community. We had lots of discussions both by a subcommittee and the council about, okay, what are the things that we want to do? And they've really come to fruition with the bond issue that we issued to try to say, oh, let's capture all those prioritized projects that are there, rather than just making as many things as possible eligible for grants and see what the, you know, the cat brings home. And some of these projects, particularly the ones that are primarily for the sake of sidewalks, I would prefer to wait a year before we put them on the tip to actually see how they weigh out in the revision of the non-motorized transportation plan. Because we don't have, you know, we, we've had to defer that because of other things and it's going to be a year later and, and getting to it. And as Mr. Ott mentioned, we still have, you know, we have still got a lot of projects already in the current tip, some of which I think are more important than these. I mean, I look at the projects that are proposed and I'm, you know, you can put Pine Street in the, you know, you know, you know, in, in the tip, but it's, it's, it provides sidewalks from an apartment complex to a park. Elwood and Angle Lane, I actually am kind of wondering what the neighborhood would think about that project, given that we have constant concerns about speed and traffic on that already and making that a, a much more viable alternative to Hipkins than it is now, which is a problem. Redoing Butte Vernon, when we've just, just chip sealed it, okay, to where it's really in, 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 in good shape. And I, you know, and, and I could wait on the Interlock and 112th to Washington piece to do that. The map in our packet is somewhat misleading because it's all the new stuff. You know, it, it makes it look like we've decided to forget about Hipkins Road and doing the sidewalks there. Because Hipkins is a, is a, is a, is a project, you know, 083, that's already in, in the tip to redo those sidewalks. But someone looking at that with, with it said, this is, these are the sidewalks we want to complete, to actually have a complete plan for sidewalks. That map isn't it. This is just what we want to add to the existing plan to be able to go, go and do that. So, you know, I certainly would. I'm not sure that I want to add all of these things, but I would certainly like, if we put this out to the public for a public hearing, that we put out a map of not, while seeing a map with the new things helped me to process it, a, a map with all the projects in the tip is what the public is going to need to, to process it.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Just, just several questions and a, and a comment. Do you think any of these are eligible for Safe Routes to Schools money? Are we still competing in that market or have we kind of finished up on that?
That's a very timely question. The Safe Routes to School grants are opening or have already opened. I can't remember, but they are due mid-July. And Director Busic and I are going to talk about that a little further this week. It's both Safe Routes to School and Bike and Ped, so we're going to evaluate what's still available. The, the one in the current new projects that comes to mind is the area around Idlewild, but I need to look at it a little bit closer.
Okay. And explain to me the Far West Drive one, because it's 164 and it looks big because it covers a whole bunch of territory. But it says sidewalk fill-in and I'm trying to think where we have to fill in sidewalks along there because I thought most of it or almost all of it was done. My other follow-up on that then is, when I walk along there, it's like the road is beginning to fall apart. I know it was redone when they brought in sewers, but it's starting to look a little bit like it's a number of potholes developing. So, but this is just solely for the sidewalk fill-in. Could you talk a little bit about the sidewalk fill-in and then the condition of the pavement?
Sure. So at some time in the past, before I worked at the city, when that area was built out, they built the curb and then filled gravel in behind the curb in a few areas. And then we have one missing piece of sidewalk down by, I think it's a Mormon church there between Lakes High School and down towards Silicon Boulevard. So it, it's filling in those missing pieces on the Lakes High side. There's even a couple of missing pieces back towards 112. So it's really just behind the curb, generally speaking.
So at, at what point is it the county property? Isn't, isn't the other side of the street unincorporated in parts of that?
Yeah, I think that's part of the issue there is we're right on that, that border area. But there are a few areas that are within the city that they just didn't, for whatever reason, the strategy at the time was to put in gravel behind the curb.
Okay. So I, I don't know that I have the, I, I get that it's a, it's now we're adding a lot. And so I, I see the council member Branstadter's point that we're kind of like, now it becomes this massive thing. But part of me thinks that this also gives us a broader plan and then we can try to sync it up with- And then we can try to sync it up with the non-motorized plan, which I, which I've always held in high esteem ever since it was done. And that predates my being on the council. It's been more than a decade since the, the first non-motorized plan came. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. But I think this, this is aspirational in a lot of cases, although I'm, I'm really pleased at where we're at now. And once we get through this, the economic issues that, that confront all of us and all governments. I think that it's a, it's a good plan. I, I do wonder about priorities and I don't know that we've laid down priorities. I mean, I like getting into neighborhoods, but is it neighborhood arterials? Is it those, those kinds of things and what are we connecting to? So I appreciate the work. I look forward to to further discussions surrounding, you know, what our priorities are, especially when we have to decide what we're going to pay for. Because I think a lot of this stuff won't grant. So it's things that if we're serious about, we're going to have to decide that we want to pay for in some future timeframe. And then I think we're going to have to talk about priorities. So, but I do appreciate the work. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm concerned that we go forward with this and don't get too rigid with respect to our prioritization. Because it's almost like there's two pots, what we're paying for and what somebody else is paying for. We've had a great deal of success competitively compared to our peers and obtaining the outside funding that upon which we so heavily rely. And people like to see those projects. And if, if it's pretty easy to explain to the public why one road gets built and another one rebuilt and another one doesn't, when it would seem logically that the other, they should be reversed in priority order. When you say, well, you know, 80%, 90% of the money came from a grant. And we're, we're following up on that for you. And then that other pot of where we actually have to pay for it ourselves is, is probably more, you know, a much more difficult question and much more worthy of a, a very reasoned prioritization. I think it's important that we have things in our plan so we can remain nimble.
Ms. Farmer.
I'm going to, going close to last, I'm going to end up echoing a lot of sentiments that we've heard tonight. I want to reiterate that I'm very much in favor of sidewalks. People these days are dodging cars and drivers are still distracted, even more distracted. And I'm also in favor of chasing the grants because it does make our own dollars go farther. So along with what the mayor said, I am more inclined to have new items in our tip so that we have more opportunities to jump on things if we need to. I do think we do need to prioritize and figure out, to Councilmember Brandstetter's point, what, what the neighbors are interested in. In particular, I'm looking at Project 152. I have spoken with a lot of neighbors in that area who do not want sidewalks. And I probably need to read up on the actual project. But a lot of folks out there just are not interested in seeing some things on one side of the road, let alone on both sides. So I'm anxious to, to see that community conversation take place.
Back to Mr. Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ott, I just had a couple of questions that you could look at them as as you're looking at the project and the project descriptions. That 302 0155, which is the Edgewater project, the description of that project doesn't mention parking. And that, that, that particular area, if we do, if we do some kind of project, figuring out what to do with, 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 with parking as we do, do work there is probably going to be important. There's a project 302 0148, which is at the corner of 100th and Bridgeport to put in a right turn lane. But the project description doesn't include upgrading the traffic signal, which would seem that might be necessary if you add that there or maybe not, if you could look at that. And so I guess I'll just comment about the mayor's is accurately describes how citizens say, well, why did you do this street and not that street? Because the priority seems different. And it's always been accurate many times to say, well, that's the street that we were able to get a grant for. Sometimes it's harder to deal with the follow-up question to that response of, well, did you apply for grants for both? And if that answer is yes, then they're pretty well understand that we owe you. You know, that's the way that, that it came out and use the money for what you could get it for. But when the answer is no, we just decided that we'd only apply for the one that we thought we could get rather than applying for both and seeing if we could get them. As, is, is one of the things that happens when you've got many, many projects that are eligible to apply for by being placed on the tip in a process that says, but you can only apply for four of them. That's when we get out of prioritization by applying for the ones that we think we're most likely to get rather than the ones we most want or need. In any event, we still got some public process to go through with this, so we'll see how that comes out. Thank you.
Just a closing comment on that. When it comes to that competition, I'd rather win than be right. I, I think we, the comeback that I usually use for that second question, Mr. Brandstetter, is I throw Seattle under the bus. They said, you know, we get a set of rules. We do the best we can inside those parameters. We don't make those rules. But we have to play by them. And so anyway, I think there is a is a satisfactory answer that is accepted by most people because they.
Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brandstetter made a comment regarding a map. Wanted to let you know, we were actually having that conversation internally this afternoon. And, and we were thinking about doing that. So if that's something that the council thinks it would be valuing, because again, you know, we've been thinking about it ourselves, we can probably have that for the public hearing, which would map out, you know, the majority of the, of the TIP.
Yeah, if, and I, I don't have any objection to the multi-colored map that you have now, but it might be helpful for the public if you had only two colors on.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Already there and less new.
Exactly. Agreed, Mayor.
Right, then we'll move on to review of the first quarter police, 2020 police report with Chief Zarro.
Okay, Councilmember and, or Mayor Anderson and Councilmembers, nice to see you all. It's been a long time. Going to be respectful of all your time. I might go through some of this kind of quickly, but I definitely want to leave time for questions at the end. Brianna, can you give share screen a try?
So you would actually be clicking the share screen on your?
Oh, is that how that works?
Do you have that feature?
I believe so. Okay, let me just click through one to make sure it works. How's that? So did that switch screens?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, so we're on, so a lot of this report, I'm going to, will be some of the first quarter. It's also going to be, you know, COVID-19 has been front and center for us. And some of that has obviously gone into the second quarter. So I'm going to get into that a little bit, but not necessarily related to crime. As we go through this, the theme is crime is down and it continues to be. We saw that at the end of 2019 and continued with the first quarter and even into the COVID emergency. Now, I, I'm going to remind you of that again later because there's some things I'm going to talk about that will make it, you know, when we're done, you'll feel like crime is up. But statistically, crime is definitely down. As you can see on some of our bigger ones, the, we normally see like simple assaults, they're down. Burglaries are up a bit, but that's not, some of that is COVID-related and I'll get into that a little bit later. Our, our thefts are down a bit. And then overall crime, we'll get to here in a second. So person crime by quarter, as you can see, we're trending down. This is, I think, the longest.
Chief, you're, you're stuck on the first slide.
I am. Okay. It, it switched for me. So how about now?
Nope.
Okay. So I'm going to switch then back to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I will just scroll through your packet. And I'll describe which page I'm on so we can at least look at the same thing.
So the first quarter report is page 96 of our packet.
Yep, I am. So let's go to page 97. Let's start some of our charts. And the first on page 97 is the person crime by quarter. And you can see we are on the, the longest stretch in a few years of consecutive quarters with a decline in person crimes. You know, we, we hope to we hope to keep that up. Then Western State Hospital. You know, I still do include this, especially with a lot of the, just everything they have going on out there. It's something we need to keep an eye on for a while. They did have a drop. And as we've seen in years past, what happens there can have a statistical impact on our own crimes. So it's worth keeping an eye on and they've been flat from the end of the year through the first quarter. And you might hear, like numbers come from the hospital or reported by the, by the media about assaults there. There's really two different categories of assaults. There's what gets reported to us and that's what I report out. And then there's things that don't, that by hospital standards amount to a physical assault. There's no injuries or anything else. That's just how they categorize it because that's how it's reported. But it doesn't amount to a crime or something that gets reported to us. So if you do hear different numbers, that's the reason why. Moving on to page 99 now. Property crime. And again, we continue to see some very positive trends in our property crime numbers. Down the lowest, I mean, we're at 928 and that's the lowest going back probably five years or more. If not the lowest in, you know, 10 or more. But just, I think that's very significant. I think, you know, we still see the, the trends from what we started last year as far as our retail theft emphasis. And some of that too is frankly, probably a result of a lot of the COVID-19 shutdowns and the activities related to that. And then society crimes are still flat. Again, those are drugs and vice. And then looking at page 101, our total crime. And again, our total crime is driven largely by our property crime numbers. And, you know, just like with property crimes being down for the, you know, the lowest in years, the same goes for our total crime numbers. Moving on to accidents by quarter. That's where on your page 102. The, you know, a drop from the fourth quarter. But a good way to look at collisions is by quarter because a lot of what we see driving collisions is weather. And quarterly weather is, you know, generally the same. So if you look at it that way, that in the past, you know, three years that we're looking at here, it's the lowest first quarter that we've had. So a lot of that, you know, certainly not a lot, some of that is a product of people being home during the first part of the shutdown. But we were seeing a trend line of decreasing collisions even before that. Our next slide, we move on to adult family homes and we still include this. It doesn't really tell us much newer each time. It's just a good reminder that they're there and that there's the volume of homes that, that are there in Lakewood. And the calls for service. And again, these numbers you're seeing are a combination of lease and fire. Another reason, particularly now, to keep these in mind is when we're talking about a contagious virus that is particularly harmful to people over a certain age and with underlying medical conditions. This is, this is the target group that you want to keep an eye on, that you want to protect. And even with all these homes and with the other adult care facilities we have in Lakewood, we have seen relatively few deaths that we know we can attribute to COVID-19. Now, as I start talking about some of the, here's some of the bad that we saw in the first quarter. So we did have two homicides in the first quarter. The first one was and if you can look back past the, the horrific nature of it, there was some pretty incredible police work that went on in both of these. And the first was just a person was dropped off at St. Clair Hospital with a gunshot wound and died before he could say what happened. Detectives and officers worked to identify who he was, find out who dropped him off and ultimately were able to identify suspects and make arrests. And these, this is a case where, I mean, we've heard it a million times in the past, but neither the victim or the suspects live in Lakewood. They met at a, I guess, a halfway point between Kent and Thurston County where they, they live to do a marijuana purchase or exchange. One group was distributing marijuana. They would buy it here and, and send it to Florida. That, that was their crime of choice. And it was during this negotiation that, or this transaction that the shooting occurred. Suspects are in jail and awaiting trial. The other one we had was in Telukum. Came, was a home invasion robbery, but it was known people. Not sure what they thought they were going to get. But again, no suspects to start off with. We were getting some untruthful stories from the witnesses. But ultimately, after a couple of weeks of work, the detectives identified the suspects and made arrests in that as well. And the arrests in that were made post-COVID-19. And it was interesting with the precautions the detectives had to take to do interviews, wearing masks and making interviews, wearing masks and making sure that the interview rooms were were cleaned after each interview. So it was really the first first in time we used our station and interview rooms post COVID. And we are investigators were diligent about taking the proper precautions. And again, the so the last two points there to just talk about person crimes and property crimes, and this the overall drops, a couple of exceptions. But overall, crime is definitely down. One of the things I wanted to include, because so much of what we've been focused on the past couple of months has been COVID-related. And I know that some of this has been shared with you by the city manager. But just to emphasize some of what we're doing at the department to mitigate the impacts of it within the department. One of the the worst things that could happen to us is somebody gets sick, exposes others, and then we end up having to quarantine a large portion of the department and our staffing, which we had plans for. But we wanted to to do everything we could to avoid having to use those plans. We brought all of our uniformed officers, neighborhood police officers and traffic officers into patrol. We did that for a couple of reasons. One, to get everybody out of the station and to focus on our primary function, and that was responding to patrol calls. Once they're in patrol, all uniformed folks were told, stay out in the field and only come to the station when necessary. We wanted to to thin our thin out our presence here and reduce the interactions between each other. We referred more calls for online reporting or phone reporting just to minimize the frequency of interactions between officers and the public. We are our dispatchers and call receivers at Salsa 911 began asking about any COVID-related symptoms when people would call. So we would have some sort of a heads up going into the call, whether or not we need to dawn all of our PPE or or what kind of precautions we'd have to take, limiting traffic stops, adhering to social distancing rules on calls or and around each other, and then no two-person cars, with the exception of two training cars that we had, that there was no other chance or choice. One thing to keep in mind, too, is is being mindful of diseases and contagious things and it's been, it's just part of our job. So this, this wasn't really anything new to us. It's a new kind of disease that we had to take precautions with. But it's being mindful of other people's illnesses and the the potential for us to catch them has always been something that we're mindful of. We restricted leave for for patrol. And again, this was just in anticipation of needing to call more people back. We didn't want to have people go on vacation and not be able to get them back. We worked on a rotational schedule for investigators, so they would tell a work or rotate into the station as needed, just so we had minimal personnel here. Same with our administrative staff and our locking our lobby. And then, you know, frequent and liberal dissemination of cleaning products for everybody. All in-person training was canceled. And then we did have four officers that we know of got tested for COVID. All were negative. So that's, I guess, the closest we came to having any sort of staffing impact based on that. And I available PPEs, I bring this up only because there was a lot of discussion early on about the shortage and what it could do to us. And we actually are doing pretty well. We have a good supply of the N95 masks and other masks and hand sanitizer to include a couple of jugs from some local local distilleries that changed their production to hand sanitizer for us. We all, we still have quite a bit of that on hand. So we're still doing good with that. Then I did think it was interesting, and we're sharing the impacts of COVID-19 on our calls for service and certain kinds of calls. Going to your page 108, there's, you know, tracking this, and these are all police calls for service. Tracking it from 2019 to or the same time period in 2019 to 2020. You can see there was a 15% reduction in calls for service, which it it, I guess, stands to reason people were home and more focused on keeping themselves healthy and what the emergency was in front of them, as opposed to fighting with their neighbors or, you know, doing whatever else would result in a call for service. And then domestic violence calls, I I included this because they're, you know, not just here, but nationwide, there was has been discussion about increases in domestic violence calls during the COVID epidemic. Early on, there wasn't really much of a difference between this year and last. But from for the four-week period, middle of March to middle of April, we did see a 16% increase. Now, this is a call for service. It does not mean a crime was committed. Just defining the call as a domestic based on the relationship between the people involved. It can be roommates, it can be parents, it can be and children, it can be spouses, boyfriend, girlfriend, or, like I said, just roommates. Any one of those would be defined as a domestic. It doesn't necessarily mean there was a a crime committed. But not surprisingly, people locked up for extended periods of time together, start to fight more and argue more, and it results in more calls to us to mediate those fights. We'll keep track of that and see how that turns out over the next couple of months. Then, of course, jail bookings, we all know about the jail restrictions that that were imposed. They were certainly there. They, we were having to let free. We would catch them, arrest them, and just turn them loose. People committing some, you know, fairly serious crimes, it would normally be an automatic trip to jail, whether it's driving in a stolen car, unlawful possession of firearm, lower-level assaults, things like that, that people ended up being kicked loose for. We've sent a report to the prosecutor's office with those, and we are going to work with the prosecutor's office at the felony and misdemeanor level to make sure that they get reviewed for charging down the road. That doesn't mean they won't be held accountable. They just didn't go to jail that night. So we hope once the jail bookings are lifted and the courts are a little freer, we'll start seeing some of these people held accountable. But with that, you can see the significant reduction in bookings in our in our jails, which ultimately, if we look at it, it costs for from a cost-saving perspective, I would imagine down the road, we'll we'll see some savings there. And that was my last slide. But before we move on, one of the things that, you know, we have all been focused very much on COVID. But there has been a lot of very good police work going on, like I always try to tout. We had one day a couple of weeks ago where there was just in the shift briefings that come out every day, between day shift and swing shift, several calls that really exemplified what your officers deal with fairly frequently here. And I've talked about it before, but it's these stuck out as being really if I could hold these up as just the example of what some of them deal with on a day, it's it would tell a story. We had one, this is all in about a 12-hour period. A brewery said a bikini stand being stocked, we had a a 92-year-old man walk out onto his front porch in the middle of the day and shoot himself in front of all his neighbors, a 10-year-old that locked himself in his trailer, his residence, and refused to let his parents or anybody else in. So officers went to that. Another domestic where the strange husband shot off warning shots in the air to scare the new boyfriend. And then another person showing up with a gunshot wound to the foot at St. Clair Hospital, followed on that, revealed that it was a bunch of felons with a bunch of guns who accidentally shot himself. And they actually recovered about seven different guns from them in that instant and or in that incident, using a search warrant. And then follow-up, following up on that, there was or even, you know, after that, a suicidal person who got went up on his roof and was refusing to come down, and officers spent a considerable amount of time talking to him before they actually just left, because he wasn't, they weren't getting anywhere. That's just one of the decisions you have to make. And interesting about all those guns that were recovered, one of them was actually stolen into coma in 1978. So it's been floating around for a very long time stolen and was finally recovered by our officers. And I bring all that up. You know, remember what I said at the beginning, crimes down. But I bring all that up, because I do think it's important to understand what our officers deal with, and just the the diversity and the disparity of calls that they have to go to in any given day. When you think about going from a person that shoots and kills himself in front of his neighbors to a 10-year-old that locks himself in his home, to a bunch of felons who, you know, accidentally shoot themselves, that's that's a pretty broad array of calls and takes a lot of focus and a lot of professionalism to deal with. And they do it well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the quarterly report.
Questions for the chief. Mr. Brandstetter.
Chief, on your report about mitigations, and you didn't mention, what is the your behavioral health contact team doing in this COVID environment for the folks that they typically serve?
That's a great question. They were allowed to stay in place. One of the considerations was that Greater Lakes was not taking in-person patients. I don't, they might still be doing that. But with that as a consideration, Ralph and Carolyn actually insisted that they stay, or I shouldn't say insisted, they strongly requested that they be allowed to continue their work, because they knew there was a a large population out there that needed their help. So they've been still out there doing their jobs.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I know the state has been aggressively letting folks out of prison. And, you know, some were close to being out anyway. I think others, they've really picked up the pace. Have we seen any of these folks? Have you had to arrest some of these people who have just recently got out of prison yet? Or are we okay?
I think we're okay right now. We are, I'm you know, we'll know more in the the coming weeks will tell us a lot more. One of the problems is, you know, that it's nice to say, yeah, they're 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 just the low-level offenders, the property crime folks. And but those are the most likely to reoffend. And so we'll know more as it comes up. But, you know, as those folks reoffend, we also don't have any place to take them, because the general won't take people who commit property crimes. So it's kind of a compounding problem. But knock on wood, so far, we haven't seen some of what other jurisdictions I think have seen.
How how are you told if they're moving into the area? Who tells you? What do we know?
Without me calling to find out, we don't, they're not real proactive about it. The state releases released a list with some general names and jurisdictions, or even counties. But I I have a great relationship with the regional supervisor for DOC here, and he and I talk somewhat regularly. And that's really the only way I would know. There is no, there's no like, online list I can go to that says, okay, here's the house that this person's staying at. It's just in my conversations with them. But I do have to be proactive about it.
So your numbers indicate that, like, burglaries are up. But it seems as though they're commercial. And that's kind of what I've been hearing, too, kind of region-wide, that it's moved from residential to commercial, because the commercial businesses are closed, and that's the opportune target. Is that? Is that that's anecdotal? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's they, the burglars go typically where the people aren't. You know, when when people are working, they go to no one's home. So that's when they go to the homes. Or if a house is vacant, that's where they burglarize. But if everybody's home and watching the vacant houses next door and and home to keep an eye on their own house, but nobody's in the businesses, then that's where the burglars are going to go.
So how are, now that the kids are home at school, and kids, I mean, juveniles between the ages of 12 and 18, they're out of school permanently, basically, until maybe even past the fall. But let's just say September. Are we seeing any uptick in juvenile crime?
I don't know about an uptick. I think early on, we saw we had a few notable incidents where a couple of juveniles were, we actually had to chase them across I-5 to try and get our hands on them. They were prowling around Lakewood Ford after hours. But not not that I would say is a trend. I think there's there are just a few incidents.
Okay, thank you.
So, chief, back to the jail capacity issue. You know, whether it's money that comes to the city, or money comes to county, money comes to the state, the CARES money is eligible for extra costs in relation to the COVID response. So creating less density in a jail or a prison is something that can, the fat, that federal money can be used for. If you had your way, what would you advocate?
Well, one of the things that I advocated for early on, I don't know that they were able to make it happen, was at least have a place to book people, even, you know, create an a tent or something outside where you can have a controlled space to book people and photograph and fingerprint them. And then, you know, maybe they get released right there. But at least they've gone through a booking process. Something along those lines, without finding or financing another structure, or or some other place to house them, that's, it's really tough that, you know, I understand what the jails are trying to do. But I would have liked to at least inconvenience them for the night by having to take, you know, them having to go and get booked and fingerprinted, as opposed to finding them with a gun in a stolen car and having to just let them go.
Any other questions for the chief? Well, thanks for the update. We really appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you all. Stay healthy.
Now we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. A few updates here on the COVID-19 front. Really, right now, the focus seems to be on reopening the economy and putting all the necessary safety precautions in place so that, you know, as a state, we can, you know, move together to be able to be able to do that. We expect to receive our official award letter for the $1.79 million as part of the CARES Act on May 22. As I mentioned last week, we have put together a team to evaluate some options and alternatives on how those dollars can be used. Right now, our goal is to present an outline of that and on as part of your next study session, which is May, May 26, which, by the way, will be a Tuesday. Since the Monday is a national holiday. We also continue to work on, you know, what the impact to our city's finances are, particularly our general and street fund. We did update our financial forecast last week in terms of what it should have looked like without COVID-19. So we'll have that for you as as well. We are waiting for some additional information regarding, you know, where revenues are. And if you recall, last week, I sent you an update on some of our major revenues. Actually, some of them are doing okay. You know, they're not growing as fast as what we thought they would, but particularly utility tax and development services are certainly holding their own. So now it's just a matter of waiting on, you know, where we are with sales tax and state shared revenues, which we'll know those numbers by the end, by the by the end of May. I will say that this, for me anyways, falls under the umbrella of sometimes it's best to go a little slow to go to go to go to go fast. The you might have seen about a month or so ago, the the Health Department opened up a temporary care center, actually over on on Hosmer, one of the newer hotels over there. Apparently, the hotel is too large for really what their needs are. Was an area that they were using to quarantine people. Apparently, the hotel is too large for really what their needs are. It was an area that they were using to quarantine people. I think they've only used not even ten, had ten people over there. So they're looking to downsize, they're looking at a number of locations throughout. Pierce County and they reached out to Lakewood to see if there's any hotels in Lakewood. So long story short. You know, we provided them a list if they wanted to reach out to them. It's an opportunity for the hotels to, to make some money. Ultimately, it will be, it will be. Their decision. But again, want to point out, the people that would be housed there are not people that actually have. COVID nineteen, but rather people who have perhaps come in contact with folks who have COVID nineteen. You know, you just, you just heard from the, from the chief and criminals are, you know, the proverbial opportunists. Another area that, that they have gotten their sticky fingers in is actually assuming people's identities and filing for unemployment claims. And you're probably gonna hear more of this in the news in the near future, but here in the city of Lakewood, as of close of business today, we've had six employees. Who are currently working, not furloughed or anything, who, who received notification that folks filed unemployment claims for them. The good news is that the state has a, has a, you know, a mechanism in place to, you know, reach out to folks to make sure that they are in fact real. But I know the city of Bellingham, our neighbor way to the north, they had fifty-three employees as of this afternoon. Who had fraudulent claims, so. It's something that we're keeping an eye out for and want to thank our H R director, Mayor McDougal, who is now keeping a very close eye on, 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 on those activities. As they come across her desk. Some good news, one of our key federal legislative priorities, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. Long story short, on Friday, actually, I think it happened late on Thursday, the Office of Economic Adjustment kicked off that process, the grant application process. Between now and May eighteenth, they're seeking feedback and comments on the process. One of the concerns that we have is that. The match has been increased from thirty percent to fifty percent. We further learned that that directive actually came from. The Secretary of Defense. Been in contact with Mr. Heck's office as well as Senator Cantwell's office and they are both following up on that. And likewise, as part of our internal review process, we'll be providing feedback to O E A that we really need to go back to the thirty, the thirty percent. Once that comment period is over, which again, ends a week from today, they will then open up the process to, to seek submittals and grant proposals. And that'll occur between about the middle of May through June twenty-sixth. That's the deadline to have them submitted. O E A will then have July and August and into the first part of September to review them, prioritize them. Rack and stack them, do whatever they do, and then they're expected to announce the awardees on September fifteenth. And then on September, by September twenty-third, the recipients are expected to have signed off and committed using those monies, including. The man, the match and things along those lines. Long story short, we are and will be ready for that. I think as I had mentioned. The J B L M North Access Project is well beyond its sixty percent design and we will certainly hit one hundred percent design by the end of June. So we're, we, we continue to move there. Continuing with the military theme, South Sound Military Communities Partnership. Is gonna, is gonna have their elected officials council event. It's scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-first. From eight to nine thirty, however, it is going to be a virtual event on Zoom and, and talking with J B L M and others. We all felt that this was an important event to have rather than waiting until November, which would, the next one would be or. Counting on one later this summer when there may or may not be an opportunity for a lot, large congregations of people to get together. So look for that in your calendar in terms of the invite as well as how to get connected virtually. Project bids on your agenda next Monday are five construction projects and, let's see, Harry Todd Park. Fort Stilliken Park, Angle Lane to include, and Lane South to include the restrooms, our annual Chip Seal project. Our annual roadway patching project and then some streetlights. And long story short, all, all five of those projects have come under budget. Missionary's estimate and very positive reflection on our team in terms of their ability to. Work within the resources that we have. We are now working through, we know what the low bidders are, so now we're working through to make sure that the low bidder is also the. The, the most. Most responsible bidder. And then again, that'll be on your agenda for next, next Monday. Also, next Monday on May eighteenth. Our contractor for Veterans Drive, which. Is Miles, I believe. I get so many names floating around in my head. Well, whoever it is, I believe it's Miles, they're gonna. Kick off construction on, on that, on that, on that project. May have seen in the news, first thing in the morning, there was an apartment fire over in the Springbrook neighborhood at the Pacific Ridge Apartments. It's a forty-unit apartment complex. The fire apparently started in one of the units and it was some form of grease fire that started in the kitchen. Long story short, our officers, again, to segue off with the chief said, they were first there, it was a fire. And they were able to help knock on the doors and get everybody out. West Pierce Fire also responded, of course, put out the fire. As, as far as what we know, the latest we have is there was one serious injury and individual had to be rescued by the firefighters. He had smoke inhalation. And some second-degree burns and was taken to the hospital and the latest that we have is he's, he's recovering. And so fourteen units have been closed down either for fire and or smoke damage. Out of the forty units and the Red Cross has been able to step in and help with temporary housing. Likewise, the city of Lakewood, as we always do, we are always standing by to help as, 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 as well. Including financially with the use of some of our federal C D B G, C D B G monies. On the economic development front, you know, things continue to move forward, certainly not at the level of two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, but. Given the circumstances, things are moving forward. One area that is, is, is really. Have, making some progress is down in the Woodbrook Business Park. There are three major projects proposed down there totaling over a million. Square feet of industrial light manufacturing, including a three-phase development on. The current Plova Park School District property, which is in the process of changing hands. To a firm out of, out of Cali, Ca- Cali, California. And then, I'm, it was last week or the week before. We received notification from the Department of Ecology that they're gonna kick off the rulemaking process regarding a directive from the governor back in. Two thousand nineteen as it relates to greenhouse gas emissions and essentially updating the CIPA process to ensure that there are. Methods to reduce greenhouse gas. Through the regulatory process. What that's gonna look like, don't know. We have representatives or our community economic development department that are gonna keep track of it. Provide feedback and comments and the governor's directive does dictate that Department of Ecology. Have that rulemaking in place on September, by September first, twenty twenty-one, so about a year and a, a year and a half from now. Again, not quite sure where that's gonna follow, what the impact is gonna be either to the city or to the development community. But certainly as more information comes about during that process, we'll try and keep you appraised of that. And with that, Mayor, that is my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing that, what are council comments, Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm good.
Mr. Branstadter.
I would just note that. Next week is National Public Works Week. And this is something we normally would have at a regular meeting. Done a proclamation and said some things to, to do some folk, but. You know, they've been busy and actually have been doing important work during the, the current. COVID work and as the agenda next week shows with all the construction contracts out there, you know. We're, we're, we, we've got some really good public works folks. And while we can't do it with a live meeting proclamation. We ought to at least get a chance to tell those folks that we appreciate them. That's all I have for you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spirit of. There being a named week to celebrate, last week was Public Service Recognition Week and I would like to give a shout out to all. City of Lakewood employees for the fantastic job that they're doing, particularly now during these really difficult, crazy times. Thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, actually, I do have a question for the city manager. Where are you in the process of, have we received the funds from the governor? For the COVID nineteen response and when will you? Be forwarding something to the council in regards to how you'd like to spend that money?
So as I noted, we'll be bringing forward options and alternatives for council review with your next, my goal is part of your next study session. I should not make twenty-sixth. As far as the flow of funds, the Department of Commerce has pointed out that there will be. First and based, so the city is not gonna receive the monies upfront. We will have to submit for the monies. They will be reviewed by Department of Commerce to ensure that they are consistent with the federal department. And then they will cut us the check.
Thanks, that's, that's fine with me. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen.
I want to say thank you. It's been a nice week. We had some good weather this weekend and I hope people got a chance to get out and be safe, social distance. In the parks and sidewalks. My question for the city manager is perhaps next week or so, we can get. A sense of how we're doing with residential and commercial construction, both new permit activity and existing. Permit activity. I don't know how well we track that, but it would be nice to see if things are kind of coming back. And if projects appear to be getting completed with certificates of occupancy being issued and the like. So I know the staff is doing yeoman's work. I just hope that the, the industry is kind of bouncing back and. Permit activity is a good indicator of that. So thank you for your work.
I would just add, you know, in the, in the weekly report that I, in the city manager update that I just sent you this afternoon, does include a, and I've been trying to do that every week. Kind of a comparison.